Good evening and welcome to this special meeting of the Nacogdoches Independent School District Board of Trustees. The record show that a quorum of the board members present, that notice of this meeting has been legally posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meeting Act. Mr. GW Neal is unable to attend tonight. Let me ask that you would remember that items do not have to be taken in order shown on the agenda. And please join us in switching our cell phones to a silent mode. We will call on now Ms. Evelyn Sosa for the Director of Bilingual ESL and migrant programs.
Mr. President, if I could, I might make a motion first that we table this item until after our new leadership comes on board and has a chance to review the information prior to its presentation to the board.
That's right.
Well, it would require a second for discussion.
You're asking to not have her present tonight?
Tonight, delay it. I'm asking for us to table it until next month to give our new leadership an opportunity to review the information and have input on the presentation when it's presented to the board.
If I could, if I could ask Ms. Sosa, how does that fit in with your timeframe for giving us this information on bilingual program?
I think that just because we already behind with the district, we have a lot of bilingual teachers that are eager to know what would be the solution. So the sooner that we present at least an option, the sooner that they will get to decide whether or not to stay with us. And also the parents, I think there has been a big concern about what is going to happen, and those are just possible solutions. Of course, the board will get to decide, but we can present again. So that is my only concern.
I would remind us as the board that this is the second time that we've put this, put this report off. And that's why we thought it important to have it tonight. But we do have a motion by Ms. Fitch.
Mr. President, it would be in the interest of the parents to be fully aware and being in attendance as well. Would it be the parents or those of students to be in attendance in case they have any questions?
Let me allow Ms. Evelyn to address that.
Parents were invited, and we also actually hired a bilingual interpreter to be ready for any parent to show. But at any time, we could actually have another meeting to promote, but it was, it was promoted. And like I said, we have a translator.
Do you think that the community, the Hispanic community has been fully, fully explained about the importance of them being here tonight? Do they know that this was?
I posted a Spanish announcement, and I mean, I probably, I mean, it was not a note that was sent to the campuses, but I mean, it was posted on, on the website and also in Spanish, in the Spanish Facebook page.
My concern is most question would be from the parents rather than me.
I think this report is given to the board for directives for the program. So it's very, like, it's very imperative and important that we hear the report. And again, I would remind us, this is, this will be the third time that we put this report off for hearing it as a board.
Can I just say this? This is, this report comes from two audits. One was in 2015 when I first arrived for the bilingual ESL program and what needed to be done to get in compliance with the state statutes for bilingual ESL, which we were not. And then they came back this year, about a month ago, to audit us again with the same issues. So from that point, Evelyn has worked with, I know, the teachers and the staff and the principals to try to compile something as far as what can go forward for next year. I know that what you're going to be looking at is a TEA report in, I don't know, several months from now that will have information about CATE program, bilingual and special ed, that's what they were auditing. And you will have what's called a progress monitoring piece where you will have to fill out, a committee will have to come together just like we've done on the other reports, and you will have to complete that report every so many weeks or month or whatever to work with TA to see the progress you're making toward what they're requiring for you to do to be in compliance. So what she did is take, she took the information, and she has worked on a plan to be presented to you to look at because, and some of this is going to be a requirement to move in this direction. They've already given it once in 15, and there wasn't really a progress monitoring piece at that time, but there is now because they did not see it change.
And my concern is that while I know you've been working with her toward development of the plan, that's your perspective, and since you're leaving us, don't we owe it to the new leadership to have a chance to review that plan before we endorse or not endorse it?
I would say that he definitely needs to review all the information, but I can tell you that what's in the booklet is what, when they left, was what they said would need to go forward. So.
Unless I'm not reading the agenda right, it's not an action item tonight. So I'd like to hear the report, and the new person can get caught up to speed with your presentation, or you personally, or?
It's just a report of what they have said we need to do.
And the recommendations we're proposing is not, is made with the collaboration with TA and Region Seven.
But I would agree, the new person needs to be fully vetted on it, get their opinions and before coming back to take any action.
And if we would like for the parents to hear, since we have the translator, we could possibly record in Spanish. So if they want to hear it, then they could possibly, and I could also do other parent meetings just for the parents to ask questions as I have had in the past, if necessary.
All right, per parliamentary procedure, we do have a motion. Is there a second? No second motion, guys. Carry on.
So good evening, President Irving, board members, Superintendent Doughty, parents, community members and staff. Once again, my name is Evelyn Sosa, and I am the Director of the Bilingual and ESL Program. So the purpose for this meeting basically is to actually review some of the concerns, and those are, number one, the director's experience, the legal requirements for services, bilingual students that we currently have, TA audit bilingual programs at the elementary level, and the recommendations for 2018, 2019 school year. Just the education, I'm currently in the doctoral program. I have my master's in school psychology in 2011, my bachelor of arts in 2004. I got my high school diploma from Nacogdoches High School, and I was a newcomer in 1997 in Nacogdoches High School. I currently have my bilingual certification, also special ed certification. I have my license as a specialist in school psychology, and I'm also a nationally certified school psychologist. In conclusion, I have 100 hours of graduate classes with different areas. I have 15 years of experience in which ones I have been a bilingual teacher, bilingual intervention teacher, ELPA coordinator, and ISDTB host with a program connexión hispana that I inherited from board member Mr. Montoya. And I was also the bilingual special ed evaluator for the entire district and also LSP supervisor. I have more than 500 hours of professional development, and that is only from Region Seven and national conferences. So when we talk about bilingual education and the program and the recommendations, the first thing that we need to really think about are the legal requirements. One of the first things that we need to think about or we need to take into consideration is that we have federal and state law. The first law that we have is as federal law, which actually can be explained in the Every Student Succeed Act or SM, which actually used to replace the No Child Left Behind Act. In that, Title One, Part A requires that the state create a plan to ensure that English language learners attain English proficiency and develop high levels of academic achievement in English. Then we have the state law that is actually explained in Chapter 89, which has the adaptation for special populations in, or chapter BB. And that is the commissioner's rule for concerning state plan for educating English language learners. In that, it says that every school district in Texas that has enrollment for more than 20 English language learners in any language classification in the same grade level, that district shall provide bilingual services or a program. That means that the bilingual, when we are thinking about bilingual education, we have to first follow the state and the federal requirements. And bilingual education is not, is not a choice. So those, we have to start with that. The second thing that we need to know that is also a federal law, that we have to identify all students. So every district has the requirement to have a home language survey. In that survey, the parents have the choice to select what language should they speak, either English only, English in another language, or not English. If the parents select English, then the student is non-LEP, meaning that they don't have any need for language, and they will be enrolled in a general education classroom. If the parent selects that the student speaks English in another language or not English at all, then the student has to be tested with a state required or approved oral language proficiency test. Then that test will determine whether or not the student is fluent. After the students have been tested, then we have what we call an ELPA meeting, which is made by the Language Proficiency Assessment Committee. We have one ELPA representative in every campus. The ELPA committee meeting, which is formed by the principal, the bilingual teacher, the ELPA representative, a parent. They get to decide based on the levels of language proficiency whether or not the student is LEP. Now, those levels are, if the student, what the law says is that if the student is not proficient in English, they have to be in a bilingual classroom. So if the student is not fluent, they are going to be considered as LEP or limited English speaker. And then the parent is, the recommendation is going to be made whether the student has to be in a bilingual program or ESL program, for both are within the bilingual services that the district needs to provide. Now, if the student tests as fluent in English, then it's considered as non-LEP, and the student will be enrolled in a general education classroom. Now, one of the things that sometimes get confusing for parents or teachers or administrators is that the terminology, because we have English language learners, which are ELLs, but previously, they used to be called limited English proficient students or LEP students. You still get to see both terms in different scenarios, but basically, what we need to understand by law that any ELL student or LEP student is any student that after receiving the oral proficiency test has not been proficient or fluent. As you can see, those are the new categories according to the Word卡Munoz Language Survey. And that is very specific that by law, for a student to be non-LEP, they have to be fluent. Now, we do the test in both English and Spanish for the ones that speak Spanish, and we do it only in English for the students that speak a language that is not Spanish. Now, we need to understand who are our ELLs or LEP students in Nacogdoches ISC. And I think this is really important that we need to take into consideration because we have, of course, our newcomers, those are students that come just straight from Mexico or other different countries. We also have our refugee students, and those are students that might also be newcomers. However, they have a different background experience as far as education. And then we also have our first generation of ELL students, and those are basically the, the sons of the newcomers, such as my children, I'm a newcomer, so my children will be first generation. And we also have second and third generation and long-term ELLs. This is also a concern by TA. Long-term ELLs means that we probably have a student that was born here in the United States, but they never were able to make the exit criteria. Which we also need to understand that once a student is placed or coded as ELL, the state has very specific criteria per grade level for that student to be able to exit. Once the student exit, they will be able, they will no longer have that code as LEP. We will monitor the students for two years to ensure that they are going to be academically successful in the following years and to review whether or not they need additional support. And it will be great to have ELL students or newcomers with good language foundation or with previous former schooling, and those are the ones that flourish, that come to us, and they're able to exit like right away. However, we are confronted with the problem that we have students that are limited in both languages. That means that they do not have a solid foundation in what language, and that is a problem. We also have what we call the hybrid bilingualism, or some people might know as Spanglish, which are, they do not have, they mix the words, they don't have, they speak in both languages, but it's not consistent, and it's not appropriate, and it's not academic. So you might find a lot of my first, second, and third generations of ELLs that they do prefer to speak English, but yet their English is social, their English is not academic, and their English is not sufficient to be successful in an English-only with academic vocabulary in English as required. We also have students that are hired in English but not fluent. Once again, in the past, we have had those second, third generations where we have students that they might say, well, they're almost, almost fluent in English, but they know very little Spanish. The law says if a student is not fluent in English, they need to be served by a bilingual program. That doesn't mean that they have to be in Spanish instruction. What it means is that we can either offer the bilingual program with Spanish instruction or ESL program, where we're also actually going to monitor the student progress. And now, we also have students, and this is one of the biggest area and one of my biggest concerns. We have students with limited or no former schooling, and I'm talking about our refugees. Because at this point, we're not only having students with language problems, but also big academic gaps. I'm talking about students in high school that might be at a first or second grade academic level. So that is another area that we by itself have to take into consideration when we plan for next school year. Now, at this point, and this number change by week, we have 1,795 ELL students in an ISD. That is 28% of all our student population. Now, I always also wanted to show you that we have 46% of Hispanic students. Now, the relevance or the importance that I want to make here is that I believe that that 28% that we have right there is not a true representation of our ELL students. And the reason is, a lot of our parents, they select that they only speak English at home because our bilingual program has been so inconsistent. Because our bilingual program has been so inconsistent, so the parents decide to just place a student in English only instruction. So sometimes they do not tell the truth and they just put, so we do have a big percent of, I would say, ELL students that are not fluent in English from the beginning, that we are, that are not under our radar or our care. This is also what is important for us as a district to have this good foundation and this continuation of programming. Because that is telling the parent, okay, we care about you. We are going to continue provide those services that your student needs. And that is just talking about the trust that the parents have in us and something that we have to change as well. Now, when we come to Texas Education Agency, we have information from the audit from 2015. And the recommendations were actually taken from the actual letter that TA provided. So when they came on 2015, what they found out is that, or some of the recommendations that they made, is that for students, home language and English shall be used for instruction. What they found out is that they were in a bilingual program, but their instruction was not, was mainly in English. Also, according to the student's level of proficiency in each language and their academic achievement, using state adopted English and Spanish instructional materials implemented through one of the four recommended programs. And one of the reasons why they selected when English and Spanish is because even the materials that we were having in the classroom, they were not sufficient, the Spanish ones, the resources were not sufficient for all the classes. Some of the main issues that they saw is that only Nettie Marshall Academy of Dual Language was actually providing bilingual services according to the law or Chapter 89. And then also, the other issue they found is that NISD offered dual language immersion program for ELLs without serving all ELLs first. So that was very clear. Now, the actions that they require from 2015. Number one, to evaluate the district's effort to recruit and hire bilingual certified teachers. To also evaluate the district bilingual and ESL model currently being implemented. Develop and implement a system to audit ELPA folders. The ELPA folders is the folders where we actually put all the bilingual education they're testing. And they needed a system for that, just as they have in special education. Number four, retrain ELPA committees on their responsibilities. And also provide professional development for teachers service, servicing ELLs. At the time when they came, they actually took all the academic performance for ELLs and they did a longitudinal study. Probably from 2011 to 2014, it was a four-year. And what they found, TA found, was that it was a systematic problem. It was not a particular classroom or campus. It was the entire system, the services provided, system-wise. And there was an issue on that based on the scores. Once again, the main message that TA had is that all ELLs need to be served and they need to have bilingual services. Now, when we look at the four models, what is required by law? What are our four options? The first option is the bilingual early exit. And the goal is for the students to exit or be fluent in by third grade. We also have the transitional bilingual or late exit. And for that, the purpose is for the students to be fluent or exit in fifth grade. Now, the goal for the late exit is for the students to have that continuation of services. We also have the dual language immersion one-way. The main goal for this program is for the students to have, promote bilingualism, bilingual literacy, cross-cultural awareness, and a high academic achievement. We also have the dual language immersion two-way. The difference between the one-way and the two-way is that the two-way serve not only ELLs but also not English speaker students. And that is the case at Nettie Marshall Academy of Dual Language. Now, this is a study that was brought from TA and is one of the major studies that they did that shows the efficiency of the dual language compared to, for example, English-only instruction. And that has been one of the major research across the United States that has been done. Now, I have already explained to you that when TA came in 2015, they did this longitudinal study. When I came here, one of the first things that I did is to actually have another study, but not just the last five years or four years. I did one for the last 13 years. And my purpose for that was to reveal the efficiency of the bilingual program versus the English-only instruction. And for my source of data, I took the PVMIS, which is the same that TA used, which is a performance-based monitoring system. In that, as you can see, on 2004 all the way to 2007, 2007, 2008 school year, that was the time where NISD had the early exit bilingual program. And those years, you can actually see the red line is the actually passing rate by the state. On the school year 2007, 2008, the district decided to eliminate the bilingual program and have immersion-only ESL. So all the ELL students were no longer self-contained. They were to regular English-only classes. On 2009, you cannot really see any differences. But on 2010, we actually had the first generation of ELLs that did not receive bilingual services in their native language. As you can see, after that, 2010, this is overall, this is students from third grade all the way to high school or in the reading state assessment. When, you can see that they have never been able to recover from that or actually met the state requirement. And I'm just talking about ELLs. On 2016 and 2017, we actually have our first generation of the students in the dual language academy where they were actually able to surpass the state-level requirement. So that shows the differences between programming. And things might change. But I also did and compare, what about the students that the parents decided, I don't want my student or my child to learn English. I mean, I just want them to learn English. Or I choose for my child to be in an English-only class. So those are the students that were coded ELL. And as you can see, that receive instruction only in English. And as you can see, when you actually compare all these 13 years, that ELL population has never been able to meet the standard requirement. I am not saying that we don't have particular cases with students, ELLs with English only have been successful. But we're talking about the program itself across the district and those are the results. Now, we usually hear Miguel is not making expected progress. And the only reason why English-only instruction is less effective for ELLs is because the ELL students have to have double the challenge. They only have to look at their language but also the academic content. And the study says that for an ELL to be able to caught up as a regular student, they need one and a half time, they need to move one and a half time faster. That means that if we have an academic year of 10 months, that means that we have to keep our ELLs if we want English only for 15 months. And that is more than a year, because in a year, we only have 12 months. So as you can see in the blue line, that is the expected academic growth per grade level. So by the end of kindergarten, they should be mastering all the kindergarten tips. But as you can see in the blue dots, that represent our ELL progress. That means that we can have students in second grade that are at the beginning of first grade because of their progress. That means that we actually have seven graders that are reading at a third grade level. So that is the impact that it's having. And it's not necessarily a lot because of teachers or instruction. It is due to the phenomenon of the ELLs having to deal with both academic and language at the same time. So, right now, this school year, it was one of my first initiatives to bring back the bilingual program. And we will have to rebuild that because we have generations with English-only instruction. So we set up that in the campuses that we have resources available, which was Bruce Queen Jones Elementary with pre-K and first. That is bilingual instruction in Spanish. Carpenter, three classes are pre-K. Fredonia Elementary, pre-K. Thomas J. Ross Elementary, kindergarten, and first. Now, we also have the dual language immersion two-way, where we serve ELLs and non-ELLS at Nettie Marshall Academy of Dual Language. Now, then we have the TA audit 2018. And they have the same concerns as the past. Because they require again that students, home language and English shall be used for instruction according to the student's level of proficiency, language proficiency and academic achievement. And using resources in English and Spanish and also one of the recommended programs. They also saw again the same issue, having only Nettie Marshall as a bilingual program according to Chapter 89, but also having offering dual language immersion for ELLs without serving all ELLs first. And they said, and this is quote from TA, "Bilingual services for all ELLs is a legal requirement. Bilingual services for non-ELLS is a privilege for districts who have established services for all ELLs." Now, some of the recommendations they did, and once again, we have not received, but this is just from our conversation with TA when they were here. They want bilingual education services must be implemented across the district at elementary level. They focus on consistency. Consistency of program implementation across elementary campuses. One of the biggest issues that we have in NISD is the constant moving and rezoning. So when we have a program dual language in one campus and then we have early exit in other campuses, and the only reason we selected at the beginning early exit is because of the limited resources. It's going to be very difficult for our ELLs to go from one campus to the other one. Now, bilingual services provided to all ELLs first and then immersion program for non-ELLS second. But the big question is, how do we do that? How can we actually keep a campus that has been successful? And with a model that has been proven to be research-based and has been very effective. But also, at the same time, how can we serve all ELLs at the same time? So working with Ms. Carmen Delgado from Region 7 for some days and also from Ms. Mario Acosta from Region 7, we have came out with a solution. The first thing that we wanted to look at is the numbers of our ELLs right now. Now, and this is just elementary level. Now, if you can see, we have numbers, we have the blue numbers, which are the students are receiving this current academic year Spanish instruction in the program that we implemented. And the black numbers on the side are the ELL students in those campuses that are receiving ESL instruction. So the main focus is, how can we continue building this? Because we are not going to bring our ELLs English-only instruction into a bilingual classroom. We have to start focusing and building the program with the students that we currently have. So for next school year, we were going to have, we approximate about 100 pre-K students. We're going to have 84 kindergarten students that are receiving Spanish instruction, 44 first-grade students, and 22 second-grade students. Now, the first thing they said is that you have to focus on the campus where you have the biggest numbers. Because if you can actually see, Fredonia Elementary only have a classroom with 10 students receiving those services. And also, even though we have, and Ragette Elementary, when we move, those are the numbers that are going to be moving up. So Ragette Elementary, the students at BQJ, the Carpenter, that were in pre-K, they are going to move into Ragette. But you are going to end up only with 10 students. And the students that actually belong to Carpenter's zone that are receiving Spanish instruction are only six. So the main focus that TA said, if you don't have enough resources or bilingual teachers, you need to focus on the campuses where you have more students. So the proposal for the recommendations for the 2018, 2019 will be to provide bilingual services at Bruce Queen Jones Elementary. And that will be serving also those students, ELL students receiving Spanish instruction from Carpenter and Fredonia. So we will have a pre-K, a kindergarten and a first-grade class bilingual. And also provide services at TJR or TJ Ross Elementary and also service in the students from Ragette. So next school year, we will have a pre-K first, pre-K kinder first and second bilingual classes. And then continue with Nettie Marshall Academy of Dual Language service and students for kindergarten to fifth grade. Now, the ELLs from Ragette Elementary, Fredonia Elementary, and Carpenter will continue with ESL support. And we cannot change that once again because the students have been receiving instruction in English. So this is how it will look when we actually look at the numbers. So actually having Emily and Carpenter and Fredonia, those students going to Bruce Queen Jones Elementary so we can have those numbers. And then having the students from Ragette that were receiving instruction, our Carpenter this year, going to TJR or Thomas J. Ross schools to have services in those campuses. And then continue with Nettie Marshall Academy of Dual Language. Now, for pre-K, because this is a program and it's very specific to the program, it was also important to have the pre-K in the same campuses. So we're going to, as proposed, to have pre-K at Bruce Queen Jones and Thomas J. Ross for next school year. That is just the bilingual pre-K. So these are the aspects now. We're still looking, we don't know how many pre-K ELL students we're going to have next year. But for sure, at Bruce Queen Jones Elementary, we're going to have kindergarten first grade. And then at Thomas J. Ross, we're going to have a pre-K bilingual kinder first and second and kindergarten all the way to fifth grade for Nettie Marshall Academy of Dual Language. Now, when we talk about Nettie Marshall Academy of Dual Language, that is another area that we need to work on. Because academy, we need to look and make sure that academic and language proficiency level of each student, that is going to be analyzed during this reminder of this 2017, 2000 school year to determine if the student is being successful. We currently have some magnet students that are not being academically successful because they are not able to have both, instruction in both languages. And the reason is, NISD did not have a guideline for entry for those magnet students. A dual language program requires guidelines to ensure that the student has the academic and the language to be able to be successful. Because once again, that program requires that the student, if it's in English, that they have, that they are fluent in English and that they actually have the academic abilities to be able to support another language. So also, the magnet students, like I said, they are not being successful. It's, we're going to have to analyze for them to come back to their home campus. And for the Nettie Marshall Academy of Dual Language, we'll offer an English-only option for students who also do not benefit from the dual language program. And that is another thing that we need to consider for next year. Because right now, we have dual language only. So if we have a student coming, it was one of the problems this year. We have students coming from other campuses that started, that are in third grade, fourth grade, or second grade. There suddenly, they're starting to receive instruction in Spanish 50% of the time. And that is not beneficial for them. So for next school year, we have to create a class from kindergarten all the way to fifth grade with English-only instruction as the other campuses. So that's something that we need to really work. And I'm going to be working with the principal and the staff at Nettie Marshall to make that happen. The dual language instruction is very important. Once again, that we create guidelines for eligibility criteria to understand the purpose and the grade levels where this is going to be implemented and the goals and the expectations from parents and students. Now, another thing that we also have to take into consideration, magnet students, according to the law, the enrollment of students who do not have limited English proficiency should not exceed 40% of that class. We do have actually two or three classes at Nettie Marshall that actually exceed, or the total numbers on some grade levels exceed the number of ELLs. That's why TA was very, that emphasized about you have even more non-ELLS being served in a dual language program and taking the space of ELL students. So we have to look at and follow the law on the percentage as well. One suggestion is applications for the 2019, 2018, 19 will be taken for kindergarten students only. And the reason is, do a Nettie Marshall Academy of Dual And the reason is, do, and Nettie Marshall Academy of Dual Language is a small campus. And if we wanna bring an English-only, we're not gonna have sufficient space to take applications for upper grades. Students need to meet eligibility criteria according to the guidelines that have been created. And we're gonna give priority to students within the zone and students then to other zones. So we have to serve the zone students first. Now, what have we done in the last six months? Because we already have actions required from TA since 2015. We have not had from the years, from this year. But in the last six months, we have actually improved the district effort to record and hire bilingual certified teachers. We currently have, as you see, different teachers from other districts that want to come. And we are working on current bilingual teachers that are working into getting their bilingual certification. We also have evaluated the district bilingual and ESL according to best practices, analyzing the students that we currently have. We also have developed and implemented a system to audit LPAC folders. All the LPAC folders this year were remade, reevaluated, reorganized, finding the pieces, the areas that were missing. And I'm sure that we actually got approval from TA because they were very pleased with the system. We also retrained the LPAC committees in the responsibilities. That was a major, major area that we improved. We also provide professional development for teachers in ELLs. And to this point, we have already, from just the bilingual ESL department, we have offered 25 professional development trainings provided until this point. And we continue to have more trainings. That is just last semester. We have also created the Spanish Facebook because one of the main concerns was the communication with parents and teachers, that the parents will be able to answer questions, that the parents will be able to make comments. That the parents, because of our high number of Spanish-speaking students, they would have that information firsthand. We also have, working with Student Support Services to provide resources for parents. And we have Empowering Parents, which are the ongoing training. And some of them have been in Spanish and provide information for the parents in their language. We have also, have our first community event that was in the fall. And that was the Culture Celebration. We're planning to have another one in the spring. The beauty of that, that was, it was all campuses. It was, we were able to build relationships. And all the students really benefit from having that communion. Because one of the main things that we need as a district is, is just to see each other as a community. We also, we are able to provide resources for the parents. And we have some available as well. And also, Student Support Center, we're able to promote their child find activities in Spanish. We were present at, in conjunction with the Public Library, at Dia de los Muertos activities. And also, we celebrated our victories with our current programmings. We'll continue to search for bilingual or ESL certified teachers. I have actually taken another approach because we, SFA Do Not Has actually a program that, that new teachers will come with a bilingual certification. But we also have, I'm working on having trainings. So any certified teacher that speaks Spanish, we can actually train them in-house so they can actually get their bilingual certification. And then, the last thing I have for you is just to see some of the impact that we have in our pre-K classes in first grade, Bruce Queen Jones, Emily Carpenter and Thomas J. Ross.
Ms. Alcedo?
Yes.
I'd like to thank you for your comprehensive report.
Thank you.
However...
Hold on, 'cause we got a video.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry. It's just two minutes.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm glad to tell.
This is a pre-K student at Carpenter, Emily Carpenter. And we have several students recorded, but we could not put all of them. For that activity, the student actually selected the book he wanted. It was not given by the teacher. He said, "I would like to read this one." So like I said, it's Carpenter, pre-K student, bilingual pre-K student. So if you have not had a chance to go and see them read, that would be wonderful for you to see. This is another reason why it's so important for us to provide the services in the students' language because we not only have the support from the teacher, but also from the parents at home that are able to help their students with the academic homework that they have. This is a classroom next door. And the students are actually taking a Spanish test. In English and Spanish. This is pre-K. I want you to take note of the handwriting. And like I said, this is the whole class. But we just selected the students that we were able to record, of course. So, you missed, but they actually were able to write all the words. And this is Thomas J. Ross, first grade class. In this first grade level, the students are not only able to read in English, but also have already made the transition, I mean, in Spanish, but also made the transition in English. So that is also another component of, of the benefits of having that, build that foundation in Language One. And that's all from my presentation.
Okay. Like I said, I wanna thank you for your comprehensive report. I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
Those students who are proficient in English, or American kids, if they decide to learn in Spanish, are they have just as luxury or they have, it's a privilege? Am I correct?
Yes, it is a privilege. And we have seen in big districts that they actually have those programs. But it's because they have the resources available, meaning that they have sufficient bilingual teachers that will be able to teach them Spanish through their instruction in all campuses.
Okay. And I, does, and ISD have the same program that, available for those students?
For the, the English-only?
People who would speak very fluent in English, at the same time, while learning Spanish. Do we have that?
Yes, we have that in the Dual Language Academy. It's a dual language model, which we have at Nettie Marshall Elementary at this point.
Next, next question I have is, moving those students from campus to campus, does it means they go away from their home campus?
Yes, and that is gonna be program-focused. But if we think about next year, the number of students that we're actually have to move is only gonna be 16, which are gonna be six students for Carpenter that were, and then 10 students from, from Fredonia.
Okay. Next question I have, you said, we moved some kids sometimes during the course of the year. And they were not introduced to Spanish. We put them in Nettie. And you, you mentioned that's basically, they're not learning anything.
Exact.
So was there any reason for to do that? Or, I mean, would the common sense do that?
My, I came to this position and late in the summer. And I was under the impression that, prior, when they rezoned, when they said, "All the students, they didn't have to go back to their homes, homeschool." So that means that in the past, all the students, the Nettie Marshall students, they were gonna remain only Nettie Marshall dual language students. But when the directive or the, the policy changed into having the students going back to their home campus, it was, they had to create with the principal and the proud director or the way to create services for English-only. To ensure that whenever this school year, whenever we have students coming from other campuses in any grade level, that they will have a way so they could be served in English-only instruction as any other campus. As the year went by, we came to find out that that change, adjustment never happened. When I, at the beginning, when I start asking, okay, how are we serving those students? The students that came to Nettie Marshall that probably were already academically behind into a instruction in third, fourth or fifth grade, 50-50 instruction, that is, it was even hotter. So what they were explaining was, what I, it was explained to me, it was that they supposed to make the schedule in a way where they would attempt to have English-only instruction. However, as the time went by, we came to find out from classroom teachers from Nettie Marshall that was actually going to be impossible to do. And the reason is, we don't have equal number of grade levels in, we might have three or four. So it was not a way to do that switch of English-only without actually having the students separate from English-only and dual language students. So that has been one of the biggest concerns for, for the campuses. Because we, right now, probably, we have about 34 or maybe more students that did not start the program in first grade. That means that their instruction in English, for all those students that were transferred, was reduced to 50%.
I don't wanna put you on the spot. Would you say it was a...
But we added a teacher. And once we find out, in December, after all of this, we were able to hire a teacher so they could actually take care of the students and for them to receive English-only instruction.
Okay, like I said, excuse me, I don't wanna put you on the spot. Would you say it was an action without really studying the situation? Or did we do those kids any favor?
No, and that has been, that is why it is required that we take, no. We, from the beginning, anyone that wouldn't know the dual language model and the requirements that it takes, they wouldn't know that it would be impossible to bring any student that has, that, that has not the language. If they have both languages, if it's an ELL that is fluent in Spanish and they have, they will be able to survive in the program. Because it requires, it's a really intense program. So no, that, that was, it was not planned. I know it was, it was given, they knew from the beginning that, that was the, the reason it was gonna happen. But they didn't, it was, a solution was not created.
Thank you. I ask because I'm one of those students.
Yes, and at, at this point, I already have the, I'm working with the teachers. I already have a list of all the students, their academic performance. And let me tell you that we have amazing teachers at Nettie Marshall. They're actually making improvements, are working with them. But yet again, we're having meetings with every grade level to see all those students that have transferred and see how they are doing with their academics. But once again, next year, we must provide English-only for those students that are sent to Nettie Marshall so they can have English-only instruction as they deserve.
Thank you.
Can I say that that was what was proposed at the beginning? And we were promised that that would happen. We didn't find out till later that it was not implemented as we had directed. But the problem you're running into is that the other campuses, as kids enroll, we're, we're running out of space on certain grade levels. And so, Nettie may have space because you're having kids. Not all the kids are going there from that, that zone. So you're sending those zone kids out to another campus. You're running out of space here for those zone kids. So you've got to use every space you can in the district. So you've got to run some kind of English program through there to even have space to house some of the kids. This year, we were just running out of space for second and fourth grade kids. They've got to find spaces.
But again, this is a decision you all make, but I always wanna be a part of those students.
Ms. Alcedo, I, I just wanna ask the question. Implementing this type of program in our district, what impact is that gonna have when start test comes around? Not only for the Spanish-speaking children, but the English-speaking children that are learning Spanish?
If we're having students that were transferred and they were not in the, in the program, I mean, of course, it would depend on the students. I know Nettie Marshall teachers that are working really hard. And like I said, we already have a teacher. However, if they're rece, if a student that is already, that is already behind, let's say in third grade, and we move them into a program where, for those students, they need actually more and more intense instruction. But instead of doing that, we place them in a, in a campus where is, they're gonna have their instruction reduced to 50% because it's 50% is only in English. So going back to your question, what impact is going to have? Like I said, I know that the students, some of them have made progress, but it's gonna have an impact just because of the nature of the program and understanding that the students, and that, a lot of the students that came to this campus this school year with no, with, with not being in the program. I mean, that was, that was gonna be hard for them to, to be able to, to be successful. But the good thing is that we have, as, after Christmas, we have a teacher that is just working in English with all the students, the transfer students.
But on the positive side, the research I've done on the, on the bilingual programs and the dual language programs is that not only the Spanish-speaking children, but the non-speaking Spanish children increase their test scores.
That's, that's, that's definitely yes.
I like that aspect because it's gonna help everyone, not just the Hispanic students.
If you look at our neighbors' districts, such as Lofkin, that's the problem that they implement and then they have in every class, I mean, every campus. Now, they only have two campuses that are dual language two-way. That serves both English speakers and Spanish speakers. But every other campus, they do have the dual language one-way, which is just self-contained with, with that model.
Thank you so much for your hard work on this. I appreciate it.
And that's what you're proposing.
Yes, I'm proposing to have the dual language one-way in Bruce Queen Jones Elementary, TJR. And then having the dual language, and, and the model is gonna be the same. The only difference is that in this, we're, we're serving ELLs and non-ELLS at Nettie Marshall and, and just ELLs in these other campuses. But if happens that we have a student that goes, ELL student that moves to Nettie Marshall, we would not have a problem because they're gonna have the same model. And that's what TA suggested.
Thank you.
I've got some questions, if you don't mind. So, you're saying the two-way program will, you're, the current recommendation is to maintain the two-way program at Nettie. The current students in those, that two-way program will stay in the two-way program? You're not gonna reduce numbers or eliminate anybody out of that program that's currently in that program?
Yes. However, I do suggest that we actually look at the magnet students that started from the beginning, that are not being successful. And the reason is, we do have some magnet students in the program that probably started from the beginning, that are not being academically successful. Because we have to look at the student, I mean, what is best for the student in this case. And even though it's a great program, because we did not have any guidelines as far as who will be able to enter, we have students that might didn't have what is required, kind of, or language-wise, to be able to sustain or being in that program. Any other district, they do have requirements. As a matter of fact, one of the policies from Lofkin is that the parents have the understanding when they go in into the dual language two-way that if the student is not successful at any point, they get to go back to their home campus just because it's in the best interest of the student academically.
So, part of the plan, part of the plan that you're proposing will be developing that criteria and bringing it back to the board for consideration. You, you mentioned, and I know there's, there's, it was an unfortunate situation this year where students were shuffled back to their, quote, "home district" and including Nettie when they were not bilingual students. And they were, they were caught in an unfortunate situation of, of, as, as Mr. Nariman pointed out, sitting in a class as an English student, not, not under... not, not understanding the, the Spanish curriculum. What I'm perceiving in your, the, the proposed plan is that you will expand the English-only strand or offerings at Nettie to return more students to their home quote, "district", um, which is the Nettie Marshall district. How many students is that going to involve that are currently being transferred out of the Nettie zone that this would impact and you'd be bringing back into the Nettie zone?
I believe that until this point, um, every student that goes, that actually is sent for Nettie either because they moved during the year, they're actually going to be enrolled in it, that has been happening. So this school year, none of the students that belong to that school has been denied the access. All of, Nettie Marshall has taken all of the students. But what I'm proposing next year is that we look at the students that we currently have, the ELL students, the magnet students that started there from the beginning, and also the transfer students that came to Nettie Marshall, um, third grade and up, I mean, in the last two, three years. So from that, we are going to determine if there's any students, um, either magnet students that are not being successful there, um, is in the best interest for them to go back to their home campus because they don't benefit from having instruction in two languages. But also look at the, uh, transfer students in, at, in the, in the program that were transferred either this year or last, that's the last two years, um, because a lot of them do not benefit from having two languages. So that's why we have to create this oldest train all the way from kindergarten to fifth grade to be able to serve the students that we already have because like I said, we have already been taking all the students, um, that belong.
And you will be, as the plan proposes, you would be accepting additional applications for the magnet program for pre-K and kindergarten this coming year?
Just for kindergarten because Nettie Marshall would not have.
No, no pre-K, you're not, the pre-K's gonna stay off of that campus then?
Yes, and we, we will have, and the dual language starts in, in kindergarten first. We're gonna develop the guidelines. And the reason is that we're not taking applications at this point for upper grades is because we do not know the numbers. Uh, once we, at the end of the year, we're, we're gonna be working and if we, um, we have space in that dual language trend, I mean, uh, the administration will get to decide whether or not, but at this point, because this, this campus is very small, um, we don't know, and we have to do this different strain, we really need to make sure that we provide services.
That's my concern. Because of the size of the campus.
Yes.
Are you going to be eliminating the two-way program on the basis that bringing this English strand in, you just won't have space to do both?
Um, the goal is, no, um, because if we, that was, that was a, um, a consideration. Do we have to eliminate the dual language? And, and it was one of the suggestions when TA came in two thousand fifteen, is like, you have a lot of bilingual teachers, you just need to send them to the other campuses. However, because of the, um, benefits of the program, uh, not only to the non-ELLS but the ELLs, um, we have decided at this point to continue the program. The, the administration will decide whether or not to grandfather that generation and just gonna have that, um, um, dual language one way for ELLs only in the next generations. Um, but no, my suggestion is, and it's possible, to have dual language two-way as it is, but also have a strain with, um, with English only. But that means that we're gonna have to reduce that dual language for only the students that benefits.
As opposed to, and the, and the other side of that would be how the campus had operated prior to this year, and that is if you're not in the du, the, the dual language two-way program, then you're an English-only speaker, you're gonna be transferred to another campus. Is that up for consideration?
Um, Haben, can you say the question again, sorry, Haben.
So prior to this year.
Mm-hmm.
The policy was that you, when you entered into the Nettie dual language program, if you were in that zone, you had the choice, you, you can apply into the dual language program. Or if you chose not to, you could apply for a transfer to another campus, which if you're an English-only student, that, that's how that issue was handled in the past.
Yes.
Is that a consideration moving forward so that you do not have to reduce your seats in your two-way dual language program?
For the ELL students that they, um, we have to first follow the law, and the law says that if they're ELLs, they have to be in a bilingual program. And that's, that's why the, the district's gonna offer services for all campuses. Um, in this case, if the student is sent for Nettie Marshall, and if the parent decides, I don't want my child, my child is an ELL, and I don't want my child to be part of the dual language, the child can stay at, uh, Nettie Marshall because we're gonna have a strain with ES, uh, with English only.
Right, and I carry that forward a bit because we've, we've come to the conclusion that when you, when you add that English strand in, K through five, because of space constraints at the school campus, it will likely result in reduced seats being available in the two-way dual language program. All right? That is a new policy. That's not the, that's not the policy the district had previously operated under prior to this year. So the question becomes, is there merit in considering retaining the previous policy, which was, it is a dual language campus, and if you're an English-only student, we will serve you at another campus?
If you're an English-language student, they can be, either whether they choose dual language or English only, they can be served at Nettie Marshall. And as far as reducing the seats, I'm not sure if I'm.
Yeah, I don't think.
That's the question I'm asking.
The question.
Wouldn't TA, wouldn't, didn't TA command, say that these changes couldn't be done?
Well, the, the, returning to the home was a, this administration's policy.
Um, I, I understand your question now, sorry.
No.
So if we would do it like the last year where, uh, students would have the choice to go to another campus, it would, would, um, have more spaces for the dual language. I would say not necessarily because once again, this next school year, even if we would offer the chance for the parents to go to another campus, because of this campus is so small and having the English only and the dual language, I mean, it would, it would not allow space for, for the students to come, even if some students were given the choice to go to another campus and have a transfer.
Final, final question for the night, I, I think we're still a little rough on what I'm asking there, but final question for the night. Um, this was a presentation tonight, you're presenting a plan. Does this plan come back to us at a later date for action? Or if not, what are you asking us for tonight?
Um, my purpose for presenting this information was, number one, um, what it was required from TA. Because if you go back to my question, how can we do that? Because I do understand the feelings and the benefits of having a dual language program. But it will be very difficult if we actually have, uh, services in every campus. So in order for us to be able to provide and, and get closer to actually provide services for all students and actually moving into that direction, we're gonna have to concise the services. Now, um, in my mind, I was thinking we could probably have one, two, or three, or four choices as far as what can we do next year. But like I said again, I worked really hard with Region Seven and TA into actually coming, coming with a, a solution or a proposal that will be doable, cost-effective, and that would have longevity, that we can actually be able to keep up for the future. So that is, um, if somebody comes and say, you know what, I have a better way to keep. Um, like I said, we have, we look at the numbers, we look at the cost, we look at the teachers that we have, so that, that took a long time and we were, that, that was the only possible solution, that we not only, um, followed the law and we established that services for all ELLs. But in addition to that, we keep the dual language, which is not required for non-ELLS, but I know it has been requested by community members to continue. That is the only solution that I can see feasible for next school year.
So Ms. Kinsey, will we be voting on this next month? Is, I mean, you've, you've presented a plan, I'm trying to.
Yeah, I'll prefer, I mean, I'm gonna ask Kelly, 'cause I don't think that falls under policy of selecting a plan. I think that's a.
Yeah, not if it, not unless it requires some type of rezoning or like you mentioned, um, tweaking of the transfer policy or something of that nature.
Okay, so this was completely FYI tonight, correct?
Information, information and, uh.
That's what I was trying to drill down to.
Whoever the new superintendent is, is gonna be very well versed in what we were discussing. You know, Evelyn's been working on this since last July, so, you know, she's brought us along with every step, but we will definitely get the new person up to speed in making this decision. The thing is, staffing, staffing is happening soon, we've gotta make decisions for next year, so it is time-sensitive in that regard.
I would say this, this is deja vu for me. This is the second time we've done this, and it was just emotional the last time we did it. We had a bilingual program very much like this a few years ago, and we ran into the same problem we're having right now, we didn't have enough bilingual teachers. And we had to do away with it, and everybody got upset, and some of the most emotional, uh, board meetings we had were over that issue, but we ended up having to give it up because we didn't have enough bilingual teachers and we're running into the same problem again, where we don't have enough bilingual teachers. And TA's breathing down our necks, saying we need to have bilingual teachers over, over with our ESL teachers and, and nobody wants to give up the bilingual programs. So we, there's gonna be some hard decisions, and I, I will just tell you, I don't see how you're gonna be, I'm going off the board, but I don't see how you're gonna be able to sustain one campus, being able to do all bilingual and be able to sustain the number of bilingual teachers you're gonna have. You're gonna have to spread that bilingual program to many campuses or you're never gonna solve, solve it.
I know I'm the outgoing superintendent, but I will just, I will just tell you what TA said in the meeting, okay? They recognize the importance, and we recognize, as a matter of fact, if you asked me, I want a dual language on every campus. The problem is, they said, the sustainability of having enough from pre-K or K all the way through five, because if you ever have a break in it and you don't have a teacher, then what do you do that year? So one of the things that Mario from TA said, what you've got to ensure to TA is what we're not doing. It's not that dual language, but we're not saying that, we're saying dual language is good. The problem is, is that, he said, Sandra, he said, you know from your past, I've worked with him, he said, you have to make sure that you're serving your ELL secondary language students first, that's what you're not ensuring. You've got to make sure that the kids, that's all they're saying, the kids that have qualified to be in a second language, a dual, a bilingual program are first to be served. What you're doing is saying, because there was never, when the magnet programs were created, there was never a screening process put in place or rules or guidelines. And that's what we've battled over the last year or so, is now changing what wasn't put in place correctly with that. So they're saying you're gonna have to go back, and you've got to set the criteria and selection process and guidelines to make sure that you ensure that those secondary, uh, the bilingual kids are served first. The English students that want to learn Spanish is a great, great, great thing, and we all want it. But that's like icing on the cake, he said. If you do that, great and wonderful, you just gotta find a way to do it. If you can't, you must ensure the bilingual kids are served first. And a lot of districts, when they can't, you take the second language when you're in secondary. I mean, that's just what happens. But what would perfect model be? Multiple languages elementary, it's just where, when do you do it and how do you do it? You've got to ensure that the first language, that twenty or more per grade level, whether it be Spanish, Somali, or whatever you're serving. If we had Somali language right now, twenty, uh, kids or more, uh, per grade level, we'd be dealing with two languages that, for bilingual. And you've got to make sure those kids are served first before you serve the English students in the Spanish. That's what they're saying. That's all they're saying. And they said to do that with your number of teachers that you'll always struggle with because other districts struggle as well, is it, the best way is probably to condense it to those campuses where you have more of the kids and put those programs in there, and that way you can sustain it better. That's what their message was.
And then going back to your concern, um, that was one of the main concerns with the early exit program, you will have to have one bilingual teacher per grade level. However, with the dual language, you can actually have one bilingual teacher and serve two classes. So let's say that in a campus, to sustain that program all the way from kindergarten to, to fifth grade, we will have, in the all program, early exit, we will need, or late exit, we will need six bilingual teachers. With a dual language program to sustain all the way to, we will need only three bilingual teachers. In the event that, let's say that next year we are moving up, we only have one bilingual teacher, we don't have a bilingual teacher to serve in Spanish, the program allows for one bilingual teacher to serve. Now, at this point, I'm actually going to have with the teachers that, the current bilingual teachers that we have, uh, with the, uh, six teachers that are attempting to become, they're already certified, they're attempting to become ESL certified, those are six. And I'm actually having bilingual teachers, certified bilingual teachers from other districts to come to our district. So right now, I'm implementing this program, I'm actually probably going to have an exceed of ten bilingual certified teachers for next school year. And we will continue with our efforts to implement, and that is, um, implementing one bilingual teacher per grade level. But even now, I can tell you that with the bilingual teachers that I have now or that I'm projecting for next school year, I'm actually going to be able to serve all the way from kindergarten to fifth grade just because the program allows us to do so. So that is how we saw, I mean, when we come that we don't have enough bilingual teachers, we do have enough bilingual teachers now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that being said, the board now will conduct an executive closed session to discuss items posted on our agenda pursuant to the following provisions of the Texas Open Meeting Act and as allowed by Texas Government Code, Section five-five-one, point zero-seven-one, five-five-one, point zero-seven-four, five-five-one, point one-two-nine. No voting will take place in closed session. Any action the board wishes to take as a result of discussions in closed session will take place after the board reconvenes in open session. It is now six forty-five.
It is now 6:45.
Been coaching her all week on not talking too much.
Oh, I noticed she slowed down.
I've been coaching her. She had a little signal, but didn't hear it like this, that makes her watch.
Oh, really? Did you ever do that?
No.
Okay.
I said, you learned something new every day. I think I have this. He wouldn't have done that.
Does it show, does it say what that stands for? Does it say what it stands for?
Yes, Mr. President. With regard to Agenda Item 5A concerning the appointment of an interim superintendent, I move that the Nacogdoches Independent School District hire Mr. Alton Fraley as interim superintendent and authorize President Irving and attorney Kelly Kraszewski to negotiate contract terms subject to final approval by the board trustees.
Wait a second.
It has been both moved and second in discussion.
Thank you.
All in favor? The vote is unanimous. Any other?
Tell them about him.
Mr. President, I would move that we table Item 5B, action to approve the interim superintendent contract.
Is there a second?
I second.
In discussion, all in favor? Thank you.
Mr. President, I would move that we table Item 5C, action to select method for filling superintendent vacancy.
I'll second.
All in favor? Motion carried.
Mr. President, one last motion. As to Item 5D, I'd make a motion to move the March 22 board meeting to March 29.
I'll second.
All in favor? Motion carried.
We're so excited to have Mr. Alton Fraley. We anticipate him arriving on the 19th. He's a native of Nacogdoches County, retired 2016 after 33-year career in the public education and the last nine years as superintendent of KEDI ISD near Houston. He was responsible for operations of over 60 campuses, more than 73,000 students, and a $700 million budget. He is certainly an exciting, very humble man, and we are so delighted to have him a part of NISD. And hopefully he'll be here soon to welcome each of us, to welcome you at first, to welcome him to our community. Thank you so very much.
If I may, I want to clarify. You said that he would be here March 19th. He's going to be in a part-time capacity March 19th and the goal of having him in a full-time capacity by April 1st.
Right, April 1st, right. He yet have a lot of appointments that he's not going to be able to clear, and so we understand that. Not to mention that Mr. Fraley is also a regent on the Stephen F. Austin State University Board. So certainly we're looking to get to grow closer with SFA. So again, we say thank you. Mr. Matory?
I'd just like to say that this is a beginning for us, our board. We're going in the right direction. We're going to get there, and I think with the support of the community and working together, we're going to get what we need to get for our kids in this community. And thank you for your support at this point and for letting us know what we need to do and look forward to going over this next year. Thank you.
I'll move to adjourn, Mr. President.
I've got a couple of things. I meant to bring it up at the last board meeting for future agenda items. I would like for... When I was on the Facilities Committee, we had looked at fencing around the high school, and for whatever reason, it kind of got pushed aside when we were doing all those things. And with everything that's happened at this point, I would like for that bid... We had some bids out there for it. I'd like for them to be pulled and let's relook at that and then kind of start looking at having a board discussion on security. I just know that the high school's an issue, but I also know TJR is an issue. And Carpenter, Freedonia, and Regay have perimeter fences, but TJR is wide open. And we have a couple of issues, it's the middle schools that need to be looked at on that particular issue. Just, that's a future agenda item, to bring it up so we can begin to have a discussion with the board.
Mr. Graham, I am a part of a facility meeting. We already have been discussing that, and we're in the process.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Vitsch?
Motion for adjourn.